Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Williamsport City Council Meeting. Tonight is Thursday, November 6th, 2025. We are live in Trade and Transit II, third floor of 144 West Third Street. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Randy Allison.
Holy Father, we come to you tonight with grateful hearts and thankful for all the blessings we have, knowing that in this world, there's always trouble of some kind because we're human and we make mistakes and people do the wrong things. But Lord, we recognize all the blessings that we have in this nation, in our city. Lord, and we're so thankful and grateful for all of those things. Lord, and tonight, as we, as councilpeople, look forward to the budget sessions coming up, where we're going to have the most, we want to have the most effective group of instances and everything that we need, Lord God, that you provide, that we can do the best for our citizens, our residents, Lord God, and that we can have a successful budget period. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of city council meeting minutes dated October 16th, 2025. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Ms. Frank?
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes. Motion passes. We got five, zero. All right, we'll move to item number four. We have a presentation by the Victorian Christmas. If you would please come up to the front.
Good evening. Members of the Victorian Christmas Committee of the Preservation Williamsport Foundation want to express our appreciation for the opportunity to present this information to the city council about the 26th Annual Victorian Christmas Event. Tonight, I'm joined by other members of the committee, Mary Jo Bauer, Peachy O'Connor, Nan Young, Linda Sterling, Dina Straub, and I'm Mary Holstein. At the end of my presentation, Nan is going to come up and correct anything I've said.
You mean everything.
And add in anything I've neglected to tell you about. I also have complimentary tickets for the event and a copy of my presentation for all of you, which we will distribute after the presentation. Our mission statement says it all, building awareness and appreciation for the rich historic architectural heritage of the greater Williamsport area and the importance of its preservation for future generations. Starting in 1999 with a candlelit tour of four homes along Fourth Street, the event grew from 150 visitors to well over 1,500 a year. In the previous two years, we have hosted guests from 35 other Pennsylvania counties and from over 19 other states. With an emphasis on touring homes and buildings with a wide variety of architectural styles, we aim to enhance our guests' appreciation of not only the rich styles of building in our community, but also the history of the area. In addition to visitors to Williamsport, the local businesses also benefit from the weekend. In 2023, the businesses which were contacted reported an increase in business for the weekend from 5% to 200% in comparison to the same weekend the previous year. Last year, 37 people spent the night in one of the local hotels. Our artisan market showcases local area artists and highlights programs at the YWCA. The boutique at the Y always reports the best ever for the year sales during the weekend. Three of the churches on the tour offer craft sales and lunches as fundraiser for their programs. These lunches routinely run out of food before the lunch hour is over. There are eight homes being presented this year. Two are in buildings which are striking examples of industrial conversions. The Pyjama Factory includes two apartments, which highlight the opportunities for modifying industrial spaces into residences. The third residence is built on the third floor of the Suscon and Diamond Drinks Factory, giving an intriguing example of the possibility of living over the store. These locations highlight what can be accomplished with repurposing existing buildings while maintaining the architectural and historic character of our community. These are examples of options we wish to encourage our guests to consider for themselves and for their businesses. The five additional homes on the tour were built between 1870s to 1921, providing a rich range of styles from English High Victorian Gothic to Queen Anne, from Tudor brick to more classic Victorian. The Raleigh House Museum, an example of high-end Queen Anne architecture, is also on the tour. The Raleigh House Museum is the only restored home of its era in Lycoming County, which is open to the public. However, the piece de resistance this year is the tiniest mansion in Williamsport. Not only is this the home on the tour, but it's also the focus of the Friday Night Program at Lycoming College. This private residence was built in 1890 by the premier staircase and mantle artisan in the area. His name is William Slack. Liz, you should know that name. That's, that's the front of your restaurant has a William Slack, which your mother stands behind. That was built by William Slack. He built staircases for numerous mansions in the city, like the Hermance Mansion, along with other residences, like the ones belonging to the Messinas, the Pearson, Parsons, and the Methodist Episcopal Parsonage, which became Marguerite Beerman's home. He was involved in other buildings, like the seven-story staircase for the Uptograph Hotel, the previous Lycoming County Courthouse Grand Jury Box and Judges Bench, and the furniture for the LaSalle Valley Masonic Lodge in Jersey Shore. The home provides visitors with numerous examples of Mr. Slack's artistic skills. The home has never been to, open to the public, and we are indebted to Sue and JoJo Potts for their hospitality. This year, we have six churches on the tour. They represent a variety of architectural styles and a wealth of decorative arts. Last year, the churches tallied over 1,740 guests. Why is this important to our community? We endeavor to not only benefit local businesses, but also to highlight the history of the Williamsport area and enlighten people about the options, the options to preserve, restore, and repurpose the city's existing residences and buildings. According to the 2016 City of Williamsport Historic Structures Survey, there were, at that time, 459 historically significant buildings in the city. There is another group of buildings which warrant planning consideration and further research. 54% of the buildings in Williamsport were built before 1900, helping give the city its unique character. William, Williamsport contains a rich variety of architecturally interesting buildings, and the preservation, restoration, and repurposing of these buildings would enhance our unique community for both residents and guests to enjoy. The Victorian Christmas Event strives to highlight these unique qualities and heighten the awareness of possibilities that exist. This fulfills our mission statement and focuses on what Williamsport was, is, and could be in the future. Thank you all for the opportunity to share the Victorian Christmas Event and vision with you tonight. Nan? Nan is our founding member. This is her 26th year, and she continues to be our guide and our mentor, and we are delighted that she's with us. And she'll tell you all the nitty-gritty about the real foundation of this organization.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Slaughter, Mr. Mackey, and city council. I would like to start by saying that I was not born in Williamsport. I moved here in 1958 and drove up and down the streets of West Fourth Street. Some of you may remember that they were dilapidated buildings and in need of great repair and a lot of student housing. Our first effort, again, was in the late 60s when we planned a tour of homes, actually two tours of homes, and then published two books with the help of the Junior League and then the formation of Preservation Williamsport. Through these organizations, city council then formed HARB, which is the Architectural Review Board, and then HARB governs the district and comes to city council for its vote. We have just continued in our work with several people. They were going to tear down the Park Home, and thanks to Bob Ilian and Tony Visco and a few others, they ruled against that, and I'm sure some of you were involved, and it's now a very, a successful business building. The one other thing that we're very proud of is saving the Peter Hertig House from the wrecking ball, and that was a joint effort by a committee formed by us called Millionaires' Row Incorporated. And in that committee was Randy Hippel and many other members, that some of you would remember their names. They were just great followers of Preservation Williamsport. And we published a walking tour brochure of the historic district. We worked with many other organizations to continue our work in preservation. I think you can't really be successful in the future if you don't know where you came from. And so that's sort of part of my message. I would like you all to understand how hard many of us have worked to remind all the citizens of the gems that we had and have on West Fourth Street. So thank you. I hope we see you at Victorian Christmas.
You should use that quote, Nan, somewhere. I think you can't really base it in the future if you don't know where you came from. We should use that.
Beautiful. I'll pass it. Thanks very much. Thank you very much to Victorian Christmas for being here to bring attention to that. That is obviously coming up here in the next few weeks. You do a fantastic job of helping bring attention to that part of historic downtown Williamsport, and you've done a fantastic job in the past of saving some of historic downtown Williamsport. So we applaud your efforts, and we hope that there are young people that are starting to join your ranks to continue the efforts as well. We're going to move to item number five, limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests this evening. Then we just had to jump real quick down to item number 21, a land development for HBF Funds. Ms. Nahr?
HBF Foods, I believe.
Excuse me, HBF Foods. It's just funds on the agenda.
I know. It's not, grabbed the wrong company in land development.
Can I have a motion on that, please?
So move. Second.
Good evening, Vice President Bider and members of council. What I present to you tonight is a land development request from Williamsport Grading LLC, known as HBF Foods Incorporated. They're requesting land development. The current land use is the former Primus Commercial Facility. It is located within the ML Zoning District. The proposed plan is for the western building structure addition of 40,738 square feet to increase the existing structure to a total of 76,857 square feet. The proposed plan also includes removal of the two westernmost parking lots, four walkways, and 21 trees. The proposed parking lots will contain a total of 30,711 square feet. The northernmost will be 21,571 square feet with 60 additional parking spaces. The southern parking lot will contain 9,140 square feet with 14 spaces and three ADA spaces. In addition, there will be two loading, truck loading areas. The northernmost will contain 8,908 square feet to service four loading docks. Access will be provided via Central Ave. The southernmost parking lot will, or loading dock will contain 11,935 square feet to service three loading docks. There are two proposed storm basins. The storm water was reviewed by both Eric Smith-Gull, the Stormwater Authority, and Bill Scott of the city's engineers. In addition, Liz will be happy that the 21 trees that are removed will be put back in and in front. They're just removing them because of the land development process. This was reviewed by both Lycoming County, and you do have their comments. It was reviewed on Monday by Planning and made positive recommendation, and I do have representatives here, and I can answer any questions.
The only, this didn't go to committee. The question that I have that I'll start off with is the access on Central Ave, where the trucks are going to be going in and out. Is that street wide enough to accommodate the additional traffic that's going to be going back and forth there?
It was, again, it was reviewed, and it did meet those requirements.
Okay.
And they, and they were made aware that it is, it is tight, but it is the requirement. So we have talked to the owners as well as the developer.
Okay. Liz, you had your hand up.
HBF Foods, what will they be doing on that?
What they, what they do is they process eggs. No, it is not a chicken farm. They merely process the eggs. What it is, is they, they purchase the eggs from local and smaller farms that actually, and they harvest them. So what they do is they process them, they certify them, they inspect them, they clean them, package them, and they ship them out to, obviously, different, different businesses and stuff. One of their biggest ones that they do utilize is Costco. So when you go to Costco and you purchase those eggs, they will be coming from HBF Foods.
And Gary, when you said that they were planting 21 trees, what you meant then is that they're cutting down 21 trees and then replanting them?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna remove them in order to do the land development, the parking lot, the storm water. Once they do, once they finish that, they'll replant those trees.
Understood, but so they're not actually, are they, are they meeting the 10% landscaping requirement?
Absolutely. That parcel will still have all of that in it there.
Okay. And they're not increasing the amount of green space out there at all?
No, they're not.
Okay. And I think that's about it. So we shouldn't expect they are not a processing facility in any capacity that involves live animals, correct?
Correct. The city does not permit that anyway.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Nahr, you may not know the answer to this, but do you have any idea how many jobs this is going to bring to the city?
I, I'm not sure. I want to say when we had originally talked to the owners, probably anywhere from 100 to possibly 200 jobs once they get up and running and get the process going.
That's great news. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you very much for bringing that forward and to...
This is a random question.
Go right ahead.
One more question. Just a quick question. Is the, is the perception that we have an untapped market here for eggs from farms? Like, or is HBF Foods bringing with them farmers who are settling elsewhere?
They basically, the, where they get most of them are from the state of Pennsylvania, so they'll beef from out the state of Pennsylvania. They do, they do purchase them from Maryland, yeah. But it won't necessarily be from this area. They purchase them from smaller poultry farms, but nothing that we have. I mean, they could be local, but...
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, correct.
Okay, all right. I was going to say that would be interesting sub-development if there were to be an increase in the number of people farming eggs around here, but, okay. All right. Thanks.
It has nothing to do with the ongoing issue with Muncie.
Okay. That's good. Thanks, Gary.
Seeing and hearing nothing else, then, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes. Motion passes five, zero. We will move back up to item number six. We have a public hearing for the ordinance on LURDA, so I will open the public hearing for all those who speak in favor or against. Again, anyone in favor or against would like to speak for the LURDA ordinance?
Make sure somebody just get up.
All right. Seeing, hearing, no comments, I will close the public hearing. And then we will move to item number seven, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance amending section 353.01 of the codified ordinances of the Steel Williamsport Lycoming County, Pennsylvania in final reading for the LURDA.
Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Williams?
Good evening, council. Thank you for taking this up. I'll start by asking if you have any remaining questions from the first reading? If there was anything unanswered, any follow-up questions you had from how this was covered the first time?
I don't think we had any follow-up questions, Scott. I do think, though, that what I generally heard from council on the first reading was that when this, if the city moves forward with another commercial LURDA at the end of '26, we would like to see the zones perhaps be a little bit more targeted than, than most of the city. I, you know, with, with an eye toward encouraging development, obviously, but encouraging it in certain corridors that we want to see it developed most strongly. But that said, like, you know, the observation was, we've got one year left. I don't see any issue with including this, this final segment that, you know, we would just like it to be maybe a little more fully considered, and I think several of us would be happy to offer input before we do, if we reenact it again in '26. Okay?
So I did re-watch that meeting. I wasn't able to be here, and that was, I was hoping you would mention that because that is something that...
For me to say it, I see.
Well, you know, I want to give you the opportunity to say it, but that is something I fully 100% agree with. So I did want to speak a little bit to the rationale of adding census tracts. So that was just following the precedent of how we were defining the LURDA zones before for commercial, and it was sort of, you know, the quickest way to add in the rest of the commercially zoned property in the city. A lot of it is underdeveloped, undeveloped. There's zone commercial property that's currently vacant and undeveloped in those areas that we would like to see developed, of course. But currently, our department is lacking the software tools to do that kind of granular analysis you're talking about. But I would say with any future LURDA ordinance, I would want to look at things on a corridor basis. So really look at like a, instead of a zone or a tract, to actually look at a range of addresses at front on a particular street, right? That would probably be the best way to do it, but lacking the software tools, which we have budgeted for next year, so we can acquire those to start doing that level of analysis, to look at land use patterns, pull in county property records, and look at what we have that might be vacant, undeveloped property that are in certain areas that are zoned in a certain way that we could include in a future LURDA, so.
Here's a funny question that is a follow-up to that for you, Nick. We cannot, we cannot do like a layered LURDA, can we? With higher levels of tax abatement for certain, for certain parcels versus others? If we, if we did a project like that? I'm just trying to think of a way, if we were looking to encourage specific development in this zone, not in the ends of it, or something like that, like providing like a, like a layered LURDA that had, say, a 10-year abatement here and a five-year abatement on the fringes of that area or something.
I'd have to look into that, but I, I think that you could pass separate, I mean, it's, it's almost two distinct processes. You set your zones first, and then you pass your LURDA ordinances, which schedule your abatements. And I don't see why you couldn't have separate ordinances, just like you do for residential or commercial or different years for different commercial, where one year you could say, this zone, we're giving this abatement, the next year, or even in the same year, this separate zone, a separate abate, abatement. You wouldn't be able to do that by property specific, but by zone, I, I believe you'd be able to, but I can confirm that. I haven't seen that before, but I think you can.
We got plenty of time to think about it, and I'm not sure it's a good idea, anyway, but I just was putting that out there as, if there were areas where we wanted to encourage development more strongly than others, we might consider them. But it's exciting to hear that you're getting the software that you'll need to do that, Scott. That's, that's awesome. I would also say, not that we don't have 8 million projects we should be working on, but something we've been talking about in most of my time on council is looking at some rezoning within the city to try to more adequately convey a modern ethic of what sort of development we want where. And, you know, even more, are you zoning to allow for a number of uses? I know we rezoned near the pajama, in the vicinity of the Pyjama Factory with an eye toward residential urban, like, integrated businesses and homes, but that might be something that would suit us in other neighborhoods, too, if that comes out of your investigations on the LURDA, that to me would be a real benefit, too. So.
The rezoning?
Well, yeah, rezoning recommendations based on looking at underutilized parcels in the city and what's adjacent to them, and whether we should rezon them to capture more residential, to capture more commercial, to capture overt, like a spillover zone that does both, you know? Anyway, thank you.
Anything else on item number seven? Seeing and hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes. Motion passes five, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number eight.
An ordinance amending article 111, 123, 129, 131 of the codified ordinances of the city of Williamsport, term limits of elected officials, veto override.
Can I have a motion, please? Seeing and hearing no motion, Mrs. Frank, could we please move on to item number nine?
An ordinance amending article 111, 123, 129, 131 of the codified ordinances, term limits in first reading. An ordinance amending article 111, 123, 129, 131 of the codified ordinances term limits in first reading.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Right. Mr. Mackey, if you want to enlighten us about why this is on the agenda and in this form?
Yep, so this is essentially the exact same ordinance that we passed in first and second readings with the addition of the language suggested by Solicitor White that will allow, I believe, three individuals the ability to run again because we did pass this halfway through both all of their terms. So essentially, again, the exact same ordinance that we passed in first and second reading already. Again, adding the language that will allow, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's Councilwoman Katz, Peg Woodring and Mayor Slaughter, the ability to run again. So that's that's pretty much it. Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions about the new version of this ordinance? Seeing, hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number 10.
An ordinance amending article 709, article 711, and article 1344 of the codified ordinances of the city of Williamsport Lightcoming County in first reading.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Nar?
Good evening again. What I present to you is a noise ordinance amendment. And just to give you a little bit of the background, several years ago, the city entered into the PLCB actually banned outside music from the PLCB licensed establishment. So what we did is created an entertainment ordinance district. And what that did is that basically permitted these licensed establishments to have music outside the building limits as long as it's within their parcels. So it went through that process and during that process, it was approved that they were allowed to have music from noon to 10:00 PM on weekdays and from noon to 11:00 PM on weekends. And again, this is all part of the entertainment ordinance. However, in 2022, PLCB went before and nationally initiated and are now allowing the establishments to have amplified music outside. So what this is doing is ours really is more restrictive. And because it is a state run, we can't be more restricted than they can. So what this is just modifying it, cleaning it up. And basically, we will be following the PLCB guidelines, which is very similar to what we have. The only difference of it is is it's the decibels the same, the distance is the same. It's just basically allowing PLCB to regulate that so that we don't have to regulate that and enforce that. It takes a little bit of burden off the police department so that they don't have to go out with a decibel reader or the Bureau of Code to do a decibel reader. It's done by the PLCB. So that's basically what this is doing is kind of repealing our ordinance and we will follow the state's guidelines.
Are there any questions on item number 11? I'm looking right at you, I'm waiting.
I just remember passing this and what a pain in the butt it was.
It was. And each year we have to re, each year we had to reapply. So what this does is this takes that away. The city won't have to spend the solicitor's time as well as us to basically reapply every year. It's we're going to be governed by the state under the PLCB rules.
And having this whole discussion about what what constituted what decibels and how we could even measure it. Anyway, glad to hear it, thanks, Gary.
Seeing, hearing, nothing else on that, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number 11.
An ordinance amending article 189 Waysgarden Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Williamsport Lightcoming County in first reading.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All right, so what this is, is something that we've talked about before in the past couple of meetings because we just appointed Mr. Steven Pietro to the Waysgarden Commission. And it was one of the, I think it is the only commission in the city that had a lifetime appointment. We have other committees in the cities like the Brandon Park Board and the Shade Tree Commission that are not lifetime. This ordinance is structuring the Waysgarden Commission the same way as those committees are structured. And Mr. Grimes, I believe you worked on this diligently as well. So if you want to just clarify a couple of things for us about how the terms are going to be structured, please.
So Mrs. Frank actually did all the hard work for this one. This one has five members and having the mayor serve as an ex officio member, the it's similar to how some of the other boards in the city work. In fact, it's some of the same language from those ordinances just for consistency. And if there's ever a legal interpretation, then it'll be for both. But to begin those terms, they start with staggered terms. So the first member, their term would end March 1st, 2027. And then you'd have 2028, 2029, 2030, 2031. It'd be five year terms. And how the ordinance is written now is that the mayor has has the ability, in fact, is required to designate which of the current members fall into each of those initial staggered terms and would notify the commission and Ms. Frank of that. And then the at the end of the term, just like other committees or other other commissions, you would just reappoint individuals either currently serving or new to those positions for a new five year term.
Thank you very much for the explanation. You're welcome. Do we have any questions about the ordinance? Yes, let's.
Is I'm presuming, Nick, that if no one is, if if we're, that is to say that the appointment remains continuous unless we notify a member that we are terminating their appointment at that five year point? Or will we be, we'll be, we'll need to reappoint every five years? So we'll need to bring them forward as reappointments like we do with any other commission.
You would need to bring them forward at the end of the five year.
They do not continue to serve until, I mean.
Correct, you it wouldn't be.
Probably do, but.
You wouldn't need to take them off the board. You would need to reappoint them after five years if you'd like to keep them on.
Good, all right, sounds good, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing and hearing none?
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number 12.
Resolution authorizing MOU between the city and Old Lightcoming Township.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nar, I'm making you get your steps in tonight.
What this MOU is, is an MOU between Old Lightcoming Township and the city of Williamsport. Previously, the city did a approved land development plan for Williamsport Area School District. And because of the way that the parcel has broken down and where the school district is, part of it lies in Old Lightcoming, part of it lies within the city. So as a land development plan, anytime you bring them before them, both entities basically have to review and go through this whole complete process. What this MOU does is basically is an agreement between Old Lightcoming Township and the city where because the 90% of the parcel is within the city and it's taxed by the city, that we will be the only ones reviewing it and putting it through the whole process so that it will speed up the land development process and it won't require. So what the process that you guys went through and reviewed everything, that Old Lightcoming won't do that as well. So basically, they are in agreement that we will do all the land development plans for Old Lightcoming for this school district because 90% of the parcel is within the city versus Old Lightcoming.
Any question related to the land development? Seems very straightforward.
Yep.
Appreciate that, thank you very much, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes, motion passes five zero. I believe there's nothing else on the agenda then for you, Mr. Nar, so I won't make you walk back up here. We'll move to item number 13.
Resolution authorizing engagement of Mid Penn Investigative Solutions Incorporated.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Pelizzi?
So what we have is just a resolution authorizing the engagement of Mid Penn Investigative Solutions, simply to look at providing us some investigative services relating to some damage that may have occurred inside of the city hall building. Pretty clear cut.
Any questions related to the ordinance? Or excuse me, resolution? Seeing and hearing none?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Move to item number 14, please.
Resolution approving an MOA between the city of Williamsport and Williamsport Firefighters Local 736.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Slaughter?
Good evening, Vice President Bider, members of council and administration. What you have before you is a resolution approving an MOA between the city and the local 736 firefighters union. We spent a pretty good amount of time, Councilman Pelizzi was the council rep on the negotiating team, going back and forth with the fire union. And we've come to this agreement that is before you this evening. I think it was some great conversations back and forth, a little give and take how any negotiation is. City gets a little bit, union gets a little bit, and I think we have a good MOA in front of us tonight. So I appreciate appreciate Councilman Pelizzi's time on it as well as the entire negotiating team that was there, both on behalf of the city and the fire union.
No, I appreciate it was it was very productive working with the mayor on this. I think we have a good agreement here in front of us. You know, when whenever you are engaged in any kind of negotiation, there's two trains of thought to approach it. You either want both parties to walk away upset or you want both parties to walk away happy. Since sometimes they're one in the same. So I think that we both walked away happy, knowing that we both, both parties got a little upset. But that's that's where we have to find each other in the middle. So I think we we have a good agreement.
Again, thank you all for your hard work on it and coming to the table and coming to the coming to an agreement. It means a lot for us to make that an easy process and it means a lot for taxpayers as well. There's nothing else on that then, Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number 15.
Resolution authorizing an intergovernmental fire services agreement.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Chief Hanks?
Good evening, Vice President Bider, members of council and city administration. I'm proud to provide a an agreement with South Williamsport Borough and South Williamsport Fire Department to provide assistance in fire rescue and QRS services to them. This agreement is a long time coming and several hundred hours were spent by the city fire administration, city administration, namely finance, South Williamsport Borough and South Williamsport Fire Department to bring this before you this evening. It was reviewed by Mayor Slaughter, city finance and PFM, as well as the agreement written by Solicitor Nick Grimes.
I'll open the floor to any questions that anyone has.
Well, I would say first, actually, for the benefit of everyone watching as well, it might be wise, chief, if you went over the highlights of the agreement and just sort of summarized components of it.
Basically, we would be providing response to box alarms, basically all of their calls, calls similar. We would treat South Williamsport very similar to the way East End is treated or the West End. They would get a full response to box alarms, tactical alarms, still alarms, vehicle accidents, rescue assignments, hazardous materials, those kinds of things. In addition to that, they they would also get some assistance with emergency management, very limited because they they are able to take care of that themselves.
Sorry, chief, do their volunteer firefighters take care of that or do their EMS?
Yeah, their their volunteer services care for that, yeah. We will assist them with limited fire prevention and their daycares and schools, as well as other community events, pre-planning Knox Box program. Excuse me, we'll work with them on the Knox Box program. They are already, they already participate in that. If you're familiar with what the Knox Box program is, they have their their system, we have ours, and we'll be working together on that. So we'll also be doing extinguisher training, safety discussions for organizations, juvenile fire setter. We're working right now on getting a program back up. Inspector Yonkin recently attended the National Fire Academy for juvenile fire setting. We will also be performing fire investigation, origin and cause investigations for the borough, collaborate with other agencies and other insurance companies, as well as perform courtroom testimony in the event that it goes to a court. And then other than that, it will be limited incident reporting, strategic planning and needs assessments, SOGs and policies, ISO rating improvements, grants, foster working relationship with police and codes, organizational representation and project lifesaver.
Thank you, chief. And can you? The working relationship with police and codes applies to our policing codes department or their policing codes department?
Their policing, and I don't know if they have a codes department, but they they have a third party that comes in and does their codes.
This is certainly comprehensive. Can you explain to me how we arrived at the fee structure?
Sure, so initially, back in 2022, we had established a similar offer to them. It was considerably more. We tried reaching out to them with the a similar amount and we didn't get, we didn't get the chance to offer that to them. The amount comes from a, the DCED down in Harrisburg through the, I think it's the governor's office. And it came out as a portion of the number of calls that they run, the housing value, the assessed value. And there was one other thing that's slipped in my mind at the moment.
So DCED provided the number?
The initial numbers. And then when when this, back in June, when this presented itself, when when they came to us and asked us propose, put a proposal together, we took those numbers. And then we factored in a number of other items like the services that they would be, that they would be receiving, as well as other things as far as personnel, overtime factored in. So what will happen is if we have three platoons that have eight personnel on those platoons and one platoon that has nine, if there are eight personnel working, so no one is off on vacation, no one is off sick or comp time or training, we will hire one additional person to make nine and then send two individuals over to South Williamsport to staff their truck.
Okay, so you're saying this agreement out of the gate necessitates the hiring of two additional people in the fire department?
I was going to say, explain hire, because that confused me at first too.
So no, we would not be hiring, we're not hiring any additional personnel. This is with the current complement of personnel that we have.
Okay.
So when I say hire, I mean somebody who is off duty.
Okay.
Okay, they will commit, they will receive a phone call, do you want to work overtime today over in South Williamsport? Yes, no, they say yes, they come in and they they, one person who was on the current platoon that's working and then the one additional overtime person will will report to South Williamsport to handle their calls.
Got it. And not to be a jerk, but is Jamie here? What's our, what's our cost per employee in the fire department? employee in the fire department annually complete?
We kind of broke this down based on we took an average and used the highest paid employee and came up with an hourly rate for that employee. We figured in pension, health insurance, all that stuff. So I mean, this this calculation is based off of that. So it's
We factored in overtime.
Yes. Yes, there's overtime factors in there. I reviewed it, and then we also took it to P F M, who has regionalization experience and asked them to review it as well to make sure that everything was calculated and they they were in agreeance that this this calculation should not have an expense to the city on the personnel.
Okay, and how much are our expenses increasing annually in the fire department?
At this point, we haven't discussed that, but the revenue should definitely over offset any expense that we have.
I mean, so we're so the 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 cost, they're increasing our payment by five percent annually. Our expenses in the fire department increased by five percent or less annually, correct?
I think P F M said three to seven percent.
Yeah.
Anywhere between three and seven percent.
Okay.
That's why we
Is the standard increase? Okay.
Yeah, it would be.
All right.
We and we're also making sure that we track this annually, tracking all the usage, tracking all of any of the costs, all of that to make sure that it has the revenue that's coming in is not.
Got it. I'm not I'm not looking to make money on South Williamsport, but
No, but we want to make sure that we don't have, you know, we're not causing
We don't want to subsidize. And I mean, are we taking into account the fact that we're providing facilities? And I'm presuming that our engines are responding.
So our apparatus is responsive responding, yes.
Okay.
However, when we send the two individuals to South Williamsport, they will be utilizing their apparatus and being in their station.
Got it. So we have put maintenance, gas, capital costs, all of that into the calculation.
Apparatus as well as theirs.
Yes, into the into the cost. Yes.
All right. Good, then that sounds like a good start. Thank you, guys.
So one thing that I will ask is I'm going to ask you to set your calendar for a year from now, because I'd be very curious to see how this relationship does work out. And where I'd be very curious to see how this does work out over the next year. I'd be curious to see what percentage of calls the city apparatus is actually responding to, how many times we actually have two of our firefighters in their building and when they're responding, just kind of get a breakdown of that to see what it is. And I know it's going to be a small sample size for just the first year, but if we could keep track of that data, it'd be very important going forward. So that way I'm hoping that other municipalities and the state start to look at this as a model to go forward with regionalizing local services. We can say, here's the data, this is what it's going to cost, this is what we need in manpower and so on, so we can have a much better service for not just the adjacent municipalities, but the entirety of like coming county, not that the city is going to be the one responsible for it, but we need to look at that because you know the problems with volunteer firefight firefighting departments, you know, volunteers are getting older, it's getting harder and harder to get certified volunteers because of the expense and also the amount of time that it takes to be certified. Now, you don't need to give me a huge compare and contrast right now, but I'm assuming that this is structured very similar, but still different than what we do with Old Lake Coming Township?
Correct, correct. Yeah, it's very similar, but it's it's modified because we're not staffing twenty four seven, three sixty five. The staffing would be daylight only. Seven days a week, including holidays. If if there are eight individuals working on a holiday, let's say Tuesday on Veterans Day, that's that's City Hall holiday. A lot of guys don't necessarily take off for it because they're still mandated to work. So there's a possibility that there could be eight guys on on duty. If that was the case, we would hire one additional, one overtime person and send two individuals over to South Williamsport.
And so Old Lake Coming's fee structure is similar as well?
Not at this time. No, they they pay in lieu of. So they own the truck, they own the equipment. They pay for the lights, the the water, the the gas, the heat over there at Old Lake Coming. So it's a little bit different, but that that agreement has been in place for September was twenty six years. And it's been a very successful relationship.
What qualifies as successful in this?
There really has not been any a lot of turmoil or you know, this is my my fire scene, not yours, you you're not going to take over. You know, there's a misconception that when you hear the city of Williamsport Fire Department, the Williamsport Bureau of Fire, that we're going to come in and we're going to take over. We absolutely are not there to take over. We are there to provide assistance. We have we have demonstrated that time and time again. Old Lake Coming has complimented us over the years on that. And we don't see a need to change that portion of our our operations.
Well, thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Thank you very much for your work on this.
Chief, how are you, sir?
Well, yourself?
Well, could we just talk a little bit about the list of services covered?
Sure.
And not covered? So under fire prevention, there's a yes for pre-planning and knock box program management, limited for daycares and schools and community events. Could you just kind of explain what pre-planning is and how that relates to a limited service for daycares and schools and community events?
Sure. So pre-planning is our guys getting out there, going into a building, reviewing where their electrical shut offs are, their gas shut offs. Are there any target hazards, you know, fifty five gallon barrels of some sort of hazardous material or flammable materials? Where their their fire department connection is? Do they have sprinklers? Where's the nearest hydrant? Those types of of things. What's the the rated fire flow that's needed to extinguish a fire on at twenty five percent of the building, fifty percent, a hundred percent? That's what a pre-plan is. It gets us out there, gets eyes on it, and we get to know things about that building and about that facility. We then, in turn, upload that into another software that we utilize. It's called I Am Responding. So whenever we are dispatched, I Am Responding pops up on the iPads in the trucks, and they're able, it goes right to the building. They're able to click on the pre-plan and open that up, see where the nearest hydrant is, any pertinent information about the building, contacts, you know, we need to we need to make contact with the owner or somebody. There's phone numbers in there, that kind of thing. So and then it doesn't really play into the daycares or community events. What that's more geared toward or what that's meant is under the fire prevention, that's like last month, October, going out to the schools and giving fire prevention talks. They have a they have a team that does that. But they may need us to come over to show the younger kids the fire truck, you know, that kind of thing. That's that's where that is. So it's it's we're we're going to work with them. So that that's why it's kind of limited.
So the pre-planning is it feels like that's a lot of work that has already been done by their fire department on existing structures? This type of thing that needs to get updated every year or?
It it does need to get updated regularly, not necessarily every year, but every year would be optimal. In the city of Williamsport, given our manpower, we are not able to accomplish that. But for our needs, they do have some pre-plans uploaded, but we we need to get out there, we need to see, we have a running document of where the fire department connections are located, where the Knox boxes are located, those kinds of things. So we will need to get over there. You may, if you're over in South Williamsport and you see one of our trucks, Inspector Yonkin was over there today, familiarizing himself with the streets, the names of the streets, where they're located, the block numbers, target hazards over there. Just off the top of my head, you know, there's the tank farm over there in Sylvandale. That's not in the borough. That's in Armstrong Township. So but we would still respond there, even without this agreement. One of our trucks still goes over there. We're dispatched automatically for a working incident.
And so when we're talking about limited services under emergency management, Little League and Mummer's Day Parade, who is their emergency management coordinator?
His name is Jason Young.
Is that the have I met him before?
I think you I think you may have at the M L B game.
Yeah. So when we're talking about emergency management for Little League specifically, that's the actual facility itself, and that that's coordinated by Little League, right? They have their own staff.
Correct. I think Chief Kachera from or from Loyosok handles a lot of that up there. He's very familiar with that.
And I guess just my last question, in terms of limited services, it says they're provided the discretion of the city and or upon the payment of additional fees by the borough. Who who decides when we start to shade out of limited into the yes category?
So that that would be the the thought process there would be let's we'll say the high school, they want to have a bonfire, much like Williamsport High School. So they want to have a bonfire, but they don't, South Williamsport Fire Department doesn't have the the resources, the personnel resources to be able to stand by for that that fire or that bonfire. So they would, you know, they may reach out to us and say, hey, can you have somebody come over? Well, that's not something that's that's in our agreement. But, you know, it's kind of like an à la carte, if you will, you know, that they may need us for this or that. But there would be, you know, an additional cost of that, and that's that's broken down. We have that broken down in our our numbers.
And that's something you you, not you specifically, but the fire department will have the ability to say, we just can't do that. Sorry?
Yes.
Or, yeah, we'll do that, and then they get a bill?
Yes.
Okay.
So and and we would work, we work hand in hand with South Williamsport Fire Department on this.
Yeah.
So
And how many how many volunteer firefighters do they currently have?
I'm not exactly sure the exact number, but they they told us that they have about eight personnel who are able to respond. Of that eight personnel, there's maybe five who are certified to be able to go interior.
Nothing else for me at this time.
No, I just wanted to say, Chief, both both chiefs, great job. Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Again, mark your calendar for this time next year to give the update.
You got it.
Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Cat, I'm sorry, Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you again. We'll move to item number sixteen.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of internet services from River Valley Internet.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Black?
Good evening, council members and administration. What you have before you is a resolution to start purchasing our internet service fee feed from River Valley Internet. It is being a price of two seventy five a month. That's for on the first twelve months. We're currently paying Comcast six hundred and sixty nine dollars a month. And we'd be getting three times the speed that we're currently getting as well.
Sounds good to me. Any questions from members of council?
Well, I'm just curious, what the what's the difference? And you said three times the speed. What is it now?
We're currently getting one hundred by one hundred megabits, both up and down. This will be going to three hundred, both up and down. With more and more of our applications becoming cloud based and web based, you just have to plus with that price, you just can't beat that.
Do we, we don't currently need that three hundred up and down?
We're pushing our hundred up and down.
I was going to say, are we having issues with our current service?
We bump up against it pretty much daily.
Okay.
It's not crippling, but it's hindering.
So three hundred gives us some room to grow.
Right, plus it's less than half the price of
Yeah, no, no, I'm not arguing with the price point. Clearly, we should switch. I'm asking if we could do with two hundred.
The next step down is the same, hundred by hundred.
All right. Sounds good. And River Valley Internet is a local company and right.
Yeah, I'm just up the
Yeah, I like to, yeah, I think that it is excellent as a community and we can support community businesses. So please just see that.
We use them for quite a bit of things. The feed between downtown and Public Works goes through them and the camera feeds in for the parks.
And when you call for service, a person answers.
Oh, yeah, just call Matt right there. Say hey.
Thanks, Chris.
Seeing hearing nothing else then from members of council?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Black. We'll move to item number seventeen, please.
Resolution awarding construction services for the Little League Boulevard and Hevern Intersection traffic signal.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Oh, second. I apologize.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council Vice President Ryder, members of council. I have a resolution presented to your consideration. This resolution is to award construction services to Letchi Electric for the replacement of Little League Boulevard, Hevern Street Intersection traffic signal. Letchi has completed a few traffic signals for us in the city, most recently the Fourth Street and Mulberry Street Signal Project that that went very well. The base low bid was five hundred ten thousand, two hundred ninety eight dollars and eighty three cents. If awarded tonight, we'll have a kickoff meeting later this month, and we will begin. They will be able to order parts and get the process moving, and construction will happen this layer in spring with a construction completion date of the end of June twenty twenty six. Now, this project is funded by Penn Dot Greenlight Go Grant Program.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy.
We have walk signals built into this?
Yes.
Okay.
All four corners, sidewalk work and new push button.
That's
Yep, ADA.
Awesome. Fantastic. Thanks.
Seeing hearing nothing else?
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number eighteen, please.
Resolution authorizing the filing of statewide local share grant through the Commonwealth Financing Authority and designating the mayor and grants administrator as the officials to execute all the documents, and the first one's for public safety, and the second one on number nineteen is for Public Works.
Can we do them together? Can we can we omnibus those two?
You can, but they're on two separate resolution papers, so just for the purposes of documentation later. Better to do it separately.
Then I'll ask for a motion on number eighteen.
Second.
Thank you very much. Melanie?
Good evening. The first resolution you have in front of you is to authorize the city of Williamsport to apply for the statewide local share account grant funding through the Commonwealth Financing Authority to support the final design and engineering to support the final design and engineering phase of the Williamsport Public Safety Improvements Project. This project involves upgrades to an existing secure public safety facility and will advance the construction to construction readiness when construction funding is available. The resolution also designates the mayor and the grants administrator to authorize executed documents and agreements on behalf of the city. This is just to put in the application.
So obviously you're going to be coming back to us later on once the application.
Yep, this is just a requirement to file the application.
All right. So we're not looking at any major projects at this point. Liz.
When are we likely to hear back on these two items?
Most likely in the spring.
Okay. And how common is it for, I guess what I'm wondering is how many grant requests is this agency, is this agency currently fielding versus the pool of funding on offer?
Um, I'm not sure.
LSA is very popular because there's no local match. So it's extremely competitive grant program.
So we'll be lucky to see one out of two.
Right.
Okay. Got it. And does LSA fund for underneath the full amount requested?
It really depends on the.
I'm not showing that.
Okay. I guess what I'm asking is, is there a chance that we will hear back that they're giving us $200,000 toward?
It's possible.
Right. Okay.
And this is just not an exceed amount. We don't have, the application's not complete yet, so I don't, we don't have the actual quote yet.
This is like a redevelopment and capital assistance grant in the sense that you submit for basic approval and then you put in the actual.
This will be an actual application, just at this point in the application project or process. I just need to get this, the resolution complete. But I, so I don't have the actual quote yet.
Got it.
So the number on the resolution is just enough to exceed while we finish that.
So can I request when we do have actual quotes and or further documentation on both of these items that they be submitted to us?
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Seeing and hearing nothing else from members of council on number 18, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number 19.
Solicitor said, I can just say Public Works. Same resolution title.
Can I have a motion, please? So move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. This resolution is for an application also with the LSA through the CFA to purchase a new leaf collection truck for the Department of Public Works. We would be replacing aging equipment.
Any questions from members of council about that? Much needed equipment, so.
Yep.
Seeing and hearing nothing else, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, Melanie. We will move to item number 20.
Resolution of the City Council of City Williamsport authorizing the repayment of HUD funds.
Can I have a motion, please? So move. Ms. Williams.
Good evening. So obviously I don't want to be up here saying that we're repaying HUD funds. But, you know, unfortunately, from time to time, we do have a project where we're either under budget or a project is abandoned because it was unable to be completed. And then we have to repay the funds. So this is three CDBG funded projects that were unable to be completed. So over the past year, we've done a big review of these CDBG projects. We had a lot that were open in our HUD system. We've done a review of all of them and we did know that these were likely, we did try to find a way we could to complete the projects. So the funds could be expended. But with these three, they were the last three, we just couldn't get them completed. So we're going to have to repay the funds. But we knew they were likely going to have to. So this is fully budgeted through the finance department. And I will say that because we discovered this and we were proactive about doing it, it's being repaid into our CDBG account, so we can reprogram the funds. So we're not just repaying the money back to HUD. It's going back into our account. So we are going to be able to reprogram them and deliver projects for the city.
That's a great point to bring up. And again, it's not a substantial amount, but it's still an amount of money that you hate to see go. However, the fact that it's going back into our bank, so to speak.
Yeah.
Is a really good thing. Is this something that you were working on in chunks or have you gone through and audited all of that at this point?
These are the last three.
The last three then?
Those are the last three. We won't have any more of these that are open outstanding projects that were abandoned. So.
Excellent. Any other questions from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes, motion passes five zero. We already did 21, so we'll move to item number 22. Certificate of appropriateness from HARB. We've got two items on there. It looks like Tate Realty LLC at 1005 West Fourth Street and Muchler, Richard and Terry, 918 West Fourth Street. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Item number 23, except for filing, the Finance Committee meeting minutes from July 22 of 2025, Veterans Memorial Park Commission from November 4 of 2025, and the Controller's Report from June of 2025. Could I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Anything to discuss on these? Seeing and hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Looks like we got everything on the agenda for tonight. Mrs. Frank, did I miss anything?
Yes, you did.
I, yes, I missed something or yes, I got everything?
You got it all.
Item number 24, announcements. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, December 4, 2025 at 7:00 PM here in Trade Transit Two. The first budget session meeting is Monday, November 17, 2025. Budget session number two is Wednesday, November 19, 2025, both at 7:00 PM here in Trade and Transit Two. Upcoming meetings, Monday, November 17, as I mentioned, budget session number one. Tuesday, November 18 at 11:30, Redevelopment Authority, 6:30 PM, HARB. Wednesday, November 19 at 10:00 AM, Blighted Property, 7:00 PM, Budget Session Number Two. Thursday, November 20, 10:30 AM, Zoning and Hearing Board. Monday, December 1, 12:00 PM, Planning Commission. Tuesday, December 2, 11:30 AM, Public Safety Committee. 1:00 PM, Finance Committee, 2:30 PM, Public Works. Wednesday, December 3 at 9:00 AM, ERC. Thursday, December 4 at 7:00 PM, City Council Meeting. All right, got all that. And we will ask then if there are any comments from members of the public this evening? Yes, sir. You've got three minutes. If you could please state your name and address for the public record?
It's Alex Heminger, 331 Royal Avenue. Just checking on progress for my proposal to change the ordinance for blocking driveways. I did email the mayor. Mayor told me to ask Mr. Nar. I did ask Mr. Nar, haven't heard back from that yet.
So, yeah, we're working through that. We're looking into it right now. So our solicitor is reviewing it. We have the ordinance. We have it updated and so decided rather not to bring it forward, but we're working through the whole process.
Yes, absolutely. All right, well, that answers that. Thank you, guys. Excellent. Thank you for coming. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Councilman. Vice President Bider, councilors. My name is Bruce Hoffman, 1000 Cherry Street. I just want to follow up quickly on the Victorian Christmas presentation. That very same weekend, November 22, 23, is the 34th Annual Will Huffman Toy Train Expo, which takes place at Park Place and at the Tabor Museum. It's a much beloved family event. Some of you on council have attended over the years. Some of the administration have attended and I would just like to invite.
They give out fruit snacks there.
I would just like to, again, invite you all, invite the citizens of Williamsport and come out for a great time. Thanks.
Thank you very much for making us aware of that. Do we have any other comments from members of the public this evening? Any comments from members of council? Mr. Pelisi.
I gotta say, when I walked in tonight, I was really happy to see Mr. Grimes joining us again. I thought he was here to submit his application and resume to come back. His trade. I was disappointed to hear that that's why he's not here. But either way, it's good to see you. Thank you, and I'm happy to be here at this seat.
Any comments from the news media? Sorry. Oh, excuse me, I skipped. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey. Council President Yoder is not here tonight, so I guess I will ask this question. We have six business days until budget session. When can we expect to see the budget?
Just as soon as possible. Ms. Livermore is putting finishing touches on it as we speak, so.
And what will be the best way to actually get our copy between now and next month?
Usually Council President Yoder picks them up.
Picks them up. Okay.
I think that's what we, and to you guys.
All right.
But I will probably touch base with him tomorrow because we are just about there.
Great.
PFM is looking at it and buttoning it up, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I did have one thing that I wanted to say. Congratulations to Mr. Bider, Ms. Mealy, and I believe Mr. Milliken is back there. So congratulations to the three of you for either getting reelected or elected to city council. As much as I'm going to miss working with Mr. Allison, I think all of us will, put in your time. So, but we look forward to it. And I also want to say thank you to Ms. Lyon and Mr. Dussinger also, who ran to be part of our city governance. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Any comments from members of the administration? Any comments from the news media? I will take a motion for adjournment. So move. Second. All in favor?